It is a work session for the preliminary talk on the budget. And I will remind you, there's no outside or citizen comments. This is discussion by mayor and council. And as we go through the presentations, I would like you to hold your questions until the end of a presentation. If Val was presenting, or Billy or somebody's presenting, let's hold your questions and get through that portion of it. And then we'll move on. So, Mr. Logan.
You want that? Go for it, Randy.
We have, I guess, topics for the work session, just kind of a general introduction and a little summary of our town fund accounts. We've got six fund accounts. We're going to talk about budget assumptions and revenue projections, capital very briefly, new position request, cost of living adjustment, and merit allocations, the Blacksburg, Christiansburg, Montgomery Tourism Office, the Main Street program, New River Valley Housing Trust Fund, community support and budget schedule.
We're getting tougher, right?
As mentioned, we have, this is kind of general background, but we do have six budget categories, distinct fund balances in our budget.
Yeah.
We've got Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, and of course, Enterprise Fund, it has to basically stay reserved for those funds. Similarly, with the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, we have a special revenue fund, which is for things like grants, such as revenue recovery, I guess, will be under special revenue as well.
Basically, we use special revenue for anything where there is a dedicated use for the funds that doesn't meet the definition of an enterprise fund. And any funds that they have left over remain with that special revenue fund. So you can't, if there's money left over in a special revenue fund, you can't take and throw that in the general fund. He doesn't like you, Andy.
Capital projects, and this would be for capital items, physical capital items of greater than $5,000. So it could be, or it could be equipment, or it could be projects.
No.
Sorry, just capital projects, this is projects.
Yeah, capital projects is in and of themselves, these are mostly the transportation projects. All of the capital projects that are related to an enterprise fund, such as water and sewer, stormwater, stay within those funds. So these would be strictly projects that are streets, or trails, or sidewalks, that are funded with general fund and grant dollars. A lot of grant dollars in there.
The cemetery fund is, I guess, handled similar to an enterprise fund, that it's reserved for the cemetery. And the general fund is basically where things like general operations come from. And it's kind of basically free to be pulled from for any use, whereas a lot of the other categories are limited by the use. General information, the town budget policy requires the first draft to be presented by the second meeting in March, which would be March 26th this year. Work session decisions will assist in completing the current budget. Overall, the economic outlets, maybe not as gloomy as '22 and '23. The labor market's still tight, but recruiting's specked up for certain positions. And I think Public Works has had a little bit of success hiring lately.
So, for revenue numbers this year, the meals tax right now, for the first six months, are trending about 7% over last year. They're 16% above pre-COVID numbers, which, pre-COVID is 2019. Anything after that's considered COVID years. So they have improved significantly since COVID. A good chunk of that increase is probably related more to inflation and cost of meals. We've also had, since pre-COVID, a number of new restaurants that have opened that have really pumped that meals tax revenue up, which is good. Lodging tax numbers, they're about 16% up over pre-COVID numbers. They're up about 2% this year, but the, my numbers are a little skewed on that, because we've got a couple hotels who have fallen behind. We do have them on payment plans, but it's skewing my numbers a little bit for the moment. But we are projecting that those revenues will stay flat for 2025. We don't expect them to increase a ton more. Most of the hotel buildup is completed within the last couple of years. So I don't expect those numbers to jump too high, at this point, anyway. So we're projecting those revenues to be flat. Try again. Sales tax numbers are trending up about 4% for the first six months of this year. So we're projecting about a 3% year-over-year increase over last year's number for estimated to receive this year, and about a 2% increase for fiscal '25 year-over-year. Personal property taxes and real estate taxes, there's no new real assessments, and we expect those to both remain relatively flat this year with no increase in the revenue numbers. Right now, we're not proposing any other fee or revenue increases. Our projected unassigned fund balance going into this budget cycle looks pretty stable and solid for us to be able to complete a big chunk of capital projects next year. Blacksburg Transit, operationally, they've increased about 3%. We're taking some of the cost increase from an accumulated fund balance that sits with Blacksburg Transit. So our projected fund balance with them will be $31,006.99. So you can kind of expect that difference to show up in next year, in the following year, plus any other increases. We were just trying to soften the blow a little bit on this year, because it was pretty substantial. So we thought we'd take a little from that fund balance that they're sitting on and not let them sit on quite so much. You want me to take that one? You're working away on some seats here.
I'm Tracy this evening.
Oh, are you Tracy tonight? Hi, Tracy, nice to see you, changed a bit. So, we're still working through capital projects and capital items. We'll be probably reducing some of the capital projects going into next year. We've committed a lot of dollars to some very large projects that will come to completion and fruition over the next several years that will require a lot of dedication of those dollars. So we're kind of heading back on what we want to jump into and commit ourselves to that have really, really large expenditures out into the future. Some of those commitments can be pretty big, so. For the park, we're carrying over the pickleball courts. And Randy, I'll let you speak to this in a second. And then about $7,500 in consulting fees for the final closeout of the park with the construction company next fall. Yeah, September.
And just to give you, I guess, kind of, per update, I think I told you I'll update that the $300,000 that we had, well, I guess, budgeted for the pickleball courts, we don't think we can accomplish it for that, although we have had discussion of donation of the construction of the courts. Although the developer that is, I guess, proposing that doesn't want to pay out of pocket for engineering design, and also to purchase the lights. They simply want to purchase the materials and do the construction. Based on that, staff plans on proceeding with the design of the pickleball courts with the $300,000 we have budgeted. And with the engineering estimate that we get from the design term, we'll use that either for 2024 budgeting purposes or negotiation of the donation of the construction with the developer.
So on the water and sewer fund, there's obviously a lot. This includes the, we briefly have talked about the EQ loan, that's a low-interest loan, and the number of projects that are rolled into that. So those are all in there, plus a few other smaller ones. And I know most of those projects aren't very small, some of them get pretty costly. I know into the future, not next year, I think there's some design costs in there this year, but there's also a big project for, is it Tower Road? I can hear. Tower Road Lift Station. But he's got that projected out in future years and just engineering for this year. So some big projects coming up there. Stormwater Fund, proposed projects currently exceed available funds within the Stormwater Fund. This is primarily the Hickok Street project. We're hoping to get some more funding out of the granters for that project, but we don't know if we're going to get that yet or not. So for now, we're not planning on it. Yeah. We don't know if we're going to get it or not. If we don't get the funding, that's the shortfall, 2.2 million in the Stormwater Fund. That would have to come from general fund dollars, then. I think we've done a few supplements for Stormwater in the past. I think two years ago, it was just under $200,000. We were projecting some for this year originally in the budget, but it looks like those projects aren't coming as quickly. And so the estimated to expend for this year, we don't expect to do a transfer to Stormwater this year, but it's going to roll into that number, because it was for projects that haven't completed.
That's the shortfall, not what we already have budgeted. This is additional 2.2.
Yeah.
Over what we've already funded.
Correct, correct. Hickok is about, in the '24 budget, is like two and a half million.
That's a matching.
Yeah.
It's a matching grant. So basically, we went back in and told the people that gave us the matching grant that we're 2.2 short, asking them for another 1.1 million to match what we were going to have to pay. But we don't have an answer on that yet.
Correct.
I think it's decent odds that we get some money, no guarantee of getting all of that.
Right.
So for now, we've put the whole amount in there, because we don't know. And we are going to have to have a commitment on that project to start rolling it forward and the bids that we received to be able to move forward with those bids. We're going to have to have a commitment on that project pretty soon. So we wanted to make you aware of that. Randy, I'll let you take new positions.
Okay, we have seven new positions requested. Emergency Services, Rescue's requesting four paramedic positions be added. Those positions would need to be funded from general fund, because right now, we're basically maxed out our revenue recovery. Basically, the town manager and finance director are trying to evaluate that for inclusion. I think right now, we have them in the draft budget, but it's tight.
Yeah, we have two in the draft.
Yes, two of the four included. Also, the fire department was requesting two firefighter positions, and we are not including those in the current budget. Actually, it should say three, three are recommended up top. Also, you're aware of the behavior health officer position that, I guess, has been proposed by a community.
You were valid community service.
And that would be basically a town health officer responding with a community services health responder, mental health responder as well. That would be largely grant-funded the first year. Next four years, the expectation would be, well, basically going forward is the expectation would be, we may have to fund it, although there's a possibility there may be state grant money for that as well. We can't really answer that at this time.
When we put it on the books, we have to put it on, under the assumption that we're going to be paying for it.
Correct, you pretty much are putting an assumption that next year, you'd be funding.
And I see that with the $140,000 salary.
Uh, no.
83 and about 40% benefit, so 89, 93, some is salary.
Yeah, that salary was 83.5. The shortfall with the overhead this year would be $30,000. We're estimating next year, total budget, $130,000.
Do you guys have the county out for the payment of the positions discussed?
The county is funding one of the positions. Blacksburg would be funding one of the positions, and Christiansburg would be funding one of the positions, the way it's proposed. And Virginia Tech would be funding one as well, although the techman would be staying on campus.
Is the state's funding the first year guaranteed?
Most of them, yeah.
They confirmed this week that they will be funding completely the first year. And then they have $600,000 to spend for the entire county moving forward. And obviously, this is contingent on new state administrations, once there's a change there. But right now, they're committed to that. So the town's portion after that would be about a fifth of the position in the future years. But they've confirmed that the first year will be completely funded.
What about for the mental health, the funds, right? What about the other positions, the paramedics and the firefighters?
Right now, we, the current draft, we don't have the firefighter positions in the budget, and we have two paramedics.
Let's see, fund at least one firefighter.
Yeah, from the county.
At least one.
Yeah.
My concern with some of, funding some of these positions is that we're getting to the point where we have a good, strong fund balance, and we can fund some of these capital projects. But the operating revenue over operating expense is getting more and more limited. So as time goes on, the more full-time positions and operating costs that we choose to fund is going to leave virtually nothing for capital and no additions to fund balance. So I would be very cautious about funding any more full-time positions than are absolutely necessary. At some point, it is going to push having to do a tax increase to fund those. I know that's not where anybody wants to go, but as we start pushing up operating costs, you got to push up revenue to have enough to cover your capital costs and infrastructure, so.
Does anybody know if any of the over $2 million that was granted for the?
ARPA, ARPA funds?
Oh, that's been spent a long time ago.
Yeah, that was dedicated to the College Street project. Again, you want to be careful about using one-time funds to fund anything ongoing. So that would be my caution.
So for the paramedics, the firefighters, and the mental health responders, obviously, there are different positions. But my question is, so if the mental health responder, each of the county and the towns and everything, everybody takes some responsibility, puts it down, that's great. But the paramedics and the firefighters, I think that should completely be on the county to help with the payment for those positions.
So just like, just to clarify, which, which none of these are in-house versus grant-funded and other agencies?
They would all be town employees. The behavior health officer would be grant-funded largely the first year.
But they're on our books as a town employee?
Yes, they would be on our books as a town employee.
Under the purview of the chief?
Correct, correct. The community services employees would not be our, the mental health, I guess, responder on their end wouldn't be our employee. That would still be community services. But they would respond with our officer.
I'll look at it as, you know, if the chief thinks he needs people full-time now, they're most of the time, I mean, comfortable more with four or five per call. Give them one. Helps. That's my theory on it.
I don't think the question, I think they're always needed. Especially with the, with the times where Dan, he probably booked everybody in the books today with the emergencies that he had today. I do think that it's our responsibility to, to count on the county and definitely require a lot of these positions to be funded.
I don't know that the county has ever funded any of our full-time positions or our wages, but they fund, you know, all our equipment, operating scans, vehicle fuel, repairs to all the county equipment, that's all funded by the county. But they've never really funded any of our positions.
Can I go back and ask a couple of questions, or are we still on this one?
I think we're close enough to get a question side of it. Get more?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, so what's included in the budget is a 3% COLA and a 2% for the merit pool for full-time employees. The state has proposed a 1% COLA, and the House of Delegates has proposed a 6% COLA, but there's been no decision on that yet. Blacksburg's including a 3% COLA and a 2% step increase in their budget. Montgomery County is including a 5% COLA. Bradford City is going to use between 2.5 and 3.5%, likely 3. So that's the COLA in their proposed budget. The numbers you see down at the bottom are what's the full cost, but we do our COLA and our merit in October. So in the budget, you see the budget number that's, that's the number that's included in the budget, because it's only awarded in October. So it's three quarters of the fiscal year. Tourism, I'll take that one, Randy.
Currently, the tourism office is in the current budget at $179,445. They are receiving $180,000 in the Form 5 Virginia Tourism ARPA grants. I just thought I'd point that out to you. And next year, we're basically rejecting fairly flat revenue, so basically $179.5 for funding for next year. The Main Street program, we had an estimated salary of $67,522 in 2023. That's based on an average salary for Main Street full-time executive directors. Town has a 40% multiplier, which would be approximately $95,000 per year if you were to fund, that's for the position. Staff is projecting about $110,000 funding for FY '24, '25 budget, though that is not currently included in the budget. New River Valley Housing Trust Fund, of course, you saw the presentation, February 13th meeting. They were requesting $39,484 for the next five budget cycles, beginning with this budget. And we did include that in the current budget.
This, ah, sorry, now it wants to work, right?
Can we get, before we get into the community support side of it, John, did you have a couple of questions on the others?
One box is there beginning. Meals tax, 7%, 16% above and everything else. What's those, what are those in total money values, dollars?
Meals tax is about $10 million, lodging is about 1.7, 1.8.
So if it's $10 million, what's the 7% above? Will it be 70, $70, $80, no?
No, that, that $10 million is what we're projecting for this year.
$10 million is what we're projecting.
Roughly, yeah.
But so that, the increase, what was the previous year, we're counting 7%? What's the percent worth? Like, what is it, like, so I guess $100,000?
1.428.
And if it's 16% over 2019, pre-COVID, so what was our revenue back then?
Hmm, about 1.5. I'm sorry, I'm thinking lodging tax, sorry. My mind, I go between those two charts like they're.
Six minutes?
Yeah, the lodging tax was about 1.5 in 2019.
Meals was about 8.
Yeah.
Meals to a flat?
About 8.5.
About 8.5. I can send you tomorrow, it's the chart of all the meals and lodging, and it has all the historical years, and it'll just have the, the six months of this year so far. Meals tax is always a month basically behind. So in February, you pay January, so. And sales tax runs two months behind. That comes to us from Montgomery County, but we just got December's in February.
And what is the meals tax?
Meals tax is about a month behind.
Yeah, with the percentage down.
Oh, meals tax is 7.5%.
I think also if you look at the fact that the aquatic centers had more events this past year. And this past weekend, we had a soccer tournament that had over 1,000 soccer players in it. Right, so it was a huge influx of people to the, at least in the uptown area for that event this past weekend. Because I know the mall was, for Saturday, was crawling with probably twice the amount of people that normally sees on Saturday.
The robotics competition, those thousands of people.
We've had a lot more events this past year in our town that is, you know, that's bringing people through our parks and recs, including you, and I say that.
Well, and I think people are finally getting over the, I don't want to go anywhere COVID thing, and getting out and doing things and going places.
But I think next year, I think our numbers, I don't want to over-project. I'd rather, I like your projections, but I really think they're going to be low.
I'm always up for that.
To, to all the activities that I, that I personally see in and around the area, and with all the stuff. And even the rocking Main Street and, and all the events we're doing downtown. I mean, I think we're going to want to promote these increases, personally.
But I think we also have to be very, things like, for example, the capital projects on Hickok Street. I mean, you're really going above what the money that we, I thought myself, we were going to spend on that street. Now, you were mentioning capital projects, which ones to cut off in a month? And are looking at a, pretty much, it will be worth $4.5 million on this project, is that correct?
Oh, right.
Is there, how much money are we getting, is there any way to cut some of what we're doing there? Or is there, do you have any ideas on how to cut?
No, I really don't think so. And I think part of what has driven the price up is that so much of the work is going to have to be poured in place versus ordering pre-cast concrete structures. I think they're going to have to pour, pour concrete structures there, rather than bring them in. So I think that's kind of been largely driving the cost up, just the fact that, that and just general inflation over the last couple of years.
Can that project hold on until we take care of some of the emergency things, like the sewer plant?
No, part of the problem is, once we commit to these projects and we have state or federal revenues on them, there's a span of time in which we have to complete those projects. So you can't push them out too far. And Hickok is kind of getting to the end of where it's going to have to get constructed, or we're going to have to pay back the money that we've already spent, that we've already, that has already been granted to us. And it also puts us in a pretty bad. And it also puts us in a pretty bad light if we back out of a project.
When next time you apply, you're less likely to get it.
So is there any way to do some of the work without having to do, maybe you can cut down some of the costs? You know, maybe it's not doing this, but doing something else, you know? Is there any way to, to, to do the project without having to spend over $4 million in the project in this one street?
I don't think engineering thinks they can get it done any cheaper than that.
So which ones are some of the refinizations they have Valerie and Randy to cut down on our capital projects this following year?
Annual paving, it's general fund funded.
North Franklin Bridge Deck.
North Franklin Bridge Deck. And then there's a couple of new project proposals that are all general fund funded that we might look at just pushing those out and not getting those started.
Where's that bridge deck thing you're talking about?
North Franklin.
Both the road and the tracks?
Just below the high school, north of Kroger.
By the Aquatic Center?
By the Aquatic Center.
Yes.
Much work they have to do there still? Is there a lot more?
They'd have to take the deck up and basically report, so.
It gets a couple million dollar project.
Did you have a report from Mike, Wes, Randy or me?
Yeah, Mike, Mike, it's a wastewater committee meeting. We, we talked about North Franklin. And basically, the further we kick it down the road, the more costly it becomes. Exactly. And it isn't just because of inflation, it's supposed to be depth of, of how you have to go. And what you don't want to have to do is ever get to where you have to replace the, the whole decking. Because they'll go in and they'll, they'll scrape until they hit where it's solid from all the salt and all the treatments and stuff that go on it. It softens the concrete, so they'll go in and they'll, they'll scrape and scrape and scrape and go, okay, now we have, we still have six inches left, so it's six inches left concrete and forms and, and all that to make it safe. However, the belief is that we have at least another 12 to 24 months before it's, you know, at a point where either we do it or, or it becomes astronomical.
So we could delay that project in order to have funds for Hickok Street or Hickok Street. And that we could kick, not forever, but a year or two, that would open us up.
A year, basically.
To build a project on Hickok Street.
And it depends. Once we kind of get all the final numbers pulled together, you know, we have to kind of evaluate all those projects once we get there. What's our fund balance projected to be at the end of this year? Once I finish those projections, then we can kind of better determine what's got to go and what can stay. And how much of those funds can we actually use? So, I mean, I've, I'm just barely getting to those final numbers now and haven't had time to be able to really tie everything together and double check it and make sure that we're working with the right numbers. So as we get closer to that, you know, I think what we're looking from you all tonight is what do you want to see included in the budget? What's near and dear to your hearts? As far as adding full-time staffing and, and projects that are high priority to you all is the direction we're looking at so that we don't end up looking through some of these projections and cutting some things that you find to be more imperative than, and we cut them out.
So Casey and I at the Water and Waste Committee meeting after being briefed on the Hickok Street project and then looking at how we can, we can actually fund that. We, we agreed that the Franklin Street money is exactly the amount we have to allocate for that project. Then if we get the grant money, it, it obviously is half that amount. And we're at a point with Hickok Street where it becomes, it becomes, it could be an astronomical failure if we don't complete the project on an overall mass. So our, our agreement was to finish the project, push Franklin Bridge down the road 12 months. And then we'd still have a million dollars sitting in the budget from that project if we get the million dollar grant from the state. That was one of the things that.
Right. And, and the other, the other reason that we're putting, we're going to put that forward as a recommenda, committee recommendation is it also otherwise would jeopardize the RC construction project for the development of the Arcade and Farmers Market project, which like many other grants that was referenced, is one that we cannot return. Well, we will have to return that those funds as well to 75 if we can't complete that project, which is contingent upon Hickok being completed. So there's a chain effect there.
One of the concerns I have with Hickok Street, and it still is, and I still haven't, I don't feel like I personally have gotten a full answer regarding loads of business and things like that and how you're going to manage that with the off forms. I just hope that the contract is well specified so we don't end up paying millions of dollars like Blacksburg ended up paying to them. And that to me is just a big concern when we get into the projects. I don't want to speak here in several years and thinking about those two by $10 million like that. I think that's a big concern of mine. I'm okay with the project as far as, you know, a stormwater, you know, project. But those are things that I really, really want to make sure that read, pass and writing a hundred percent.
We have access to their property, so their, their property won't be denied access during the project.
There is no, there is a difference between access and loss of revenue. And if you can prove there was a load of revenue, just like you did in Blacksburg, which you had ability to, you know, they had ability to do this project.
They're actually telling us they're planning on tearing their buildings down with, in conjunction with our project, but.
I understand that, but that's also a load of revenue because they have had nobody renting those buildings for a while now. So, and some of them. And so that would be just a real question to read and just make sure we have all that cleaned up. Like I said to you before, they have permission from the owners to do all this project. And then later on, after the project was finished, they got, with a big load, the town did, and they ended up selling for a lot of money. So that's just a concern of mine.
In those areas that you're, you're talking about, you said they haven't had rent on those buildings for quite a while. Then how do you claim loss of revenue on something that's not producing revenue?
Well, it can be.
Is that potential or, I mean, if it's not, if it's not producing income at that point, some revenue can be lost.
I understand, but that's our goal, exactly, just like.
But you're, you're in the, you're okay with the, you're okay with the, using the Franklin Bridge money right now for?
I think it's a lot of money and I want to see if there was any way to cut down on some of the spend. If we have to do it, which I understand, but I am more interested than I'm seeing College Street done, to be honest with you.
It might be with the 1.1 and grant matching, obviously, that.
Yeah, and College Street is, is way further along. We'll get you a briefing on College Street, but we're, we're.
I'm not mistaken that, doesn't the Hickok project have to be completed before we can do any, start doing College Street? Because that's where it all goes in.
It doesn't have to be completed, it doesn't have to be completed, but it'll all connect at, at some point further down the road. But we're already moving forward on the College Street project.
That's not either or.
No, it's not either or.
It's not Hickok or College, they're both getting connected.
They're both separate, they're both separate projects.
Right.
And, and College Street's already, is already further along.
Well, there is a lot of thick one.
So that one's, that one's a done deal. Hickok is the only one where when we went back in, it, it came back more pricey than we had originally forecasted. Couple of years old, the budget proposal.
And we'll be here back about the grant match.
A few, few weeks.
Any day.
Yeah.
What Mike told us that.
Yeah.
And fortunately, it's a group that we have a good relation, working relationship with. And he said it boils down to whether or not they actually have the money in their pot. That sometimes they have people that didn't use the money, so they have money left over. And so it really depends on that, that particular pot, whether or not they got, you know, 10 million in it or 600,000.
Yeah. Last project we had like, I'm sorry, go ahead. Last project we had like this was the, oh, it's right on the tip of my tongue. Griffin Mill Road. And by the time we bid it out, it, the bids came in way above what we had grant funding for. And we went back to the table and they came back with a little bit, and then a little bit more, and then a little bit more. And we ended up getting a, a good chunk of it funded. So normally, we've had a good enough relationship with them that when we go back and ask for more and we give them explanation, we.
But we complete projects.
We sometimes get it. I won't say always, but sometimes we get it and, and it.
Can you also, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. I just, I think I'm in agreement with Tim and Casey, you know, that that would be a good transfer of money. Stormwater issues have been an issue for years that lived in Christiansburg. And I know as I was walking and knocking, you know, that there are many, many citizens that want to see the stormwater stuff move forward. So I think that would be a nice decision to move the project down the road here and make sure this gets done.
I've been talking about the drainage project for four or five years on Hickok Street. I mean, I know that now, now COVID also, you know, took a major pause there, but even from the days when the Farmers Market was relocated. So it, I mean, we've been talking about this for years.
And it wasn't in just the town by itself, the owners, if I'm correct, they just finished, one of them, the last one, just finished signing the last assignment, right?
We do have easements and all the property for the pond, uh, for basically the first phase of the project.
For College Street, yeah.
The other one, when was the last signature that showed up? It was recently due.
Yes.
You still talking about Hickok too?
I think we're talking about both for the same time.
I think we do have, I think we got signatures for both.
Yeah, I, I, they're, I think College Street's all done. I think there's one hanging out on Hickok, but it's not a huge dollar amount or anything on. And I don't think they're anticipating huge holdout or anything on that one.
What do you mean? So do we have all this signatures or?
There's, I think there's one left on Hickok.
So there is one left?
Not sure if it's Hickok or College.
So you have.
But it's.
I believe that is actually College.
It's College Street.
Is that one College Street?
It's still on College Street.
Yeah.
So we have everything for Hickok. We have one left on College Street.
I had them backwards.
But it's, because it's a rental property and we're waiting for the.
The town signature.
On Hickok Street, you were just requesting too, so that has requested for this information. About those positions, I, I am so for obviously getting firefighters and things like that. I, I've heard of these positions, I know they are needed. But how do we as a group, can we come up with a plan to really reach out to the county in a different way and say, hey, we really need the help? I understand that, you know, financially, you know, Blacksburg, for example, doesn't have the big budget to put out for $645,000. I think that was the amount for Blacksburg, Blacksburg County. We do. There's a lot of things that we have to pay a lot more to get. And we're, from my understanding, we get less tax revenue than they do as a town. How we can, can we come to the county and say, hey, can you help us a little bit more? Especially because we have 81 going by, by us. I don't believe.
Talking about transit or for fire?
I'm talking about the, the, the position, paramedics and firefighters. And you know, I, I don't recall that 81 going to Blacksburg probably, no, 460, 460. But we have a lot, it feels like we have a lot more to take care of in that regard as far as like different things. I just personally think that, you know, that the county has to have so much other locality, other places that don't have to pay another tax. And they have building, buildings and things like that in here. We are the town requesting for a little bit of help. I don't feel like just asking for that. A lot.
What, what would be, what would be the salary? What would be the dollar amount for one firefighting position? Anything?
79?
No, 68 with benefits.
Yep. Salary would be $48,652 with benefits would be 60, a little over 68,000.
How's the revenue recovery in there?
Fire, well, I think they're working all the RFP on it. But that, you know, that projection was going to be about $150,000.
And are all of these new positions or, or any of them just positions that have been opened that have not been filled?
No, no.
Are they all?
These are the new hires.
We all have three full-time firefighters.
So and what, what is the implication like three to five years down the road, which we're starting to be thinking about with fire and rescue and less volunteers and more paid staff? When we max out on things like our recovery, I mean, you, you talked about, you know.
We already have maxed out.
Yeah, and so the solution is raise taxes, but like long-term then, if we're making these shifts, which we need in terms of paid staff with volunteer for fire and rescue, you know, where, where are we at then thinking more of this from a long range perspective?
From justice or go to the county. And I think the best one is that we go to the county.
We actually did a county for $200,000 to fund police officers last year.
Maybe they think different about part of.
I don't, they're not going.
They're, no, they're county, if I could say something, they're county just funding 1.2 million in salaries for EMS people for the county departments. So they're, they're already funding EMS positions and they do that without revenue recovery.
For the county, but, but they're not providing that same amount of money or dividing it by half or a quarter to keep the town.
No, that's just from Montgomery County. That's for, that's for response coverage and, and Ryaners and response coverage.
So there's a $1.2 million and the town is not getting.
Well, that just means they don't have any interest in funding any of our positions.
No, but they can, they can definitely, we can, we are a big part of the county. Why are we so afraid of the county? We have a weird economy. It's like we're almost half of the population.
Did you say that Montgomery County is not doing revenue recovery? Not yet. The county's not doing?
The county is getting ready to do revenue recovery, but they, they have not started revenue recovery yet. And then they funded, they funded the position, the full-time positions and the part-time positions in a general fund. Getting started to be able to provide EMS coverage for Shawsville area, Shawsville, Ellison area and Suffolmille for the Ryaners area.
I think that the relationships between county and town as far as like response goes is one helps the other. They always help the other. That's how the county contributes to the town.
And nobody's questioning.
But if they fund positions in the town and the town can collect more revenue recovery because we have more positions, they will receive less revenue recovery because there will be less need for them to come into the town and support us. So I just don't think that's ever going to happen.
$100,000 compared to a $1.2 million. I think that, you know, like I said to you, they got 100,000 people living in the county and a quarter of that population lives in the town. And we're literally like not even asking. I don't see us asking much for this amount of money as a council. And I think just like we did with the police department, there is, I mean, a lot of the county people are different now. And who is to say they, they may change their minds, you know? We play a good, you know, us. I mean, we, we definitely do ask the county too for this. I mean, this should all not be our liability too because they, we pay for all the services to the county as a taxpayer. I see that I pay for those taxes too and we're not getting the benefits that we're supposed to get. We're getting the benefits of the town and the town is doing a really good job. All of you guys are doing a great job. Thanks. And, you know, all of you guys are doing a really good job for Andy and, and everybody trying to keep with this budget to make it work with their small amount of money that we get from tax revenue.
If you were to request funding for fire or rescue from the county, I'm not sure what the response would be. I'll say the Board of Supervisors is a little different than it was last year because they had an election. So there's been some change in the, the people there.
if I could say something, 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 if I
And then backfilling with a new person. Plus, the state model included a bonus to encourage somebody to take the job. Because those jobs are not, that, that particular duty's not always the most pleasured thing. You don't get people lining up to go sit at the hospital and do mental health calls all day long. So, they include a bonus in there to encourage that. That's why it's an elevated thing, and they also included fringe in it. So, it covers that part of it. It's funded for the first year, um, then each, then Governor Yonkin's budget puts six hundred thousand aside to be divvied up to fund the whole program across the county. But then, uh, when I say it's contingent, it's then if a new governor's administration comes in with a new budget, there's no guarantee it has the same commitment to the mental health process. It would, but those kind of things, once they get started, they're kind of hard to back away from. And especially since this one's codified into a Marcus alert.
Do you have somebody in line?
Uh, we have some people that are interested in it. I mean, one of the key elements of this would be, you know, you've got to have an officer that wants to do this kind of work too. You can't just draft somebody and say, "You're it." Because, again, you don't get to buy into the program. And we do have a couple of people who've expressed interest and are good at that kind of call and working with people. It takes a really good negotiator to, to do that kind of, to work. And, you know, it's, um, I think it's a, going to be a good step forward for the county and for the town to have that benefit for the people that are in crisis.
So, will this person be responding to regular calls until they are needed or how does it?
The way the model is set up, and it's based on call volume, but it's going to be at least one co-response unit working somewhere within the county every day. And they will respond to whatever mental health call comes in anywhere in the county using our concurrent jurisdiction agreement. So, if, say, the Christiansburg officer in council is off today, but Blacksburg has theirs working and we have a mental health call here that needs their response, then Blacksburg's unit would come to this and deliver the mental health professional. We would do the same if our unit's working and theirs is off. So, it's, they would, we, sadly, we have enough mental health call volume in Montgomery County to keep somebody busy most of the time during the day. So, that would be largely all they'd do. But, in the event of a crisis or a critical incident, or just, you know, if there's no call volume, it is an officer that can go to regular calls.
Okay.
Um, they don't, they would not be dispatched to everyday calls on a regular basis. But, if we have a critical incident, they, the plan is they drop off their mental health physicians at a safe spot and they respond as well.
Can you remind me, I know we discussed this when I visited the police department, what percentage you think of your calls involve mental health? That's pretty high, if I remember.
Well, it's, it's getting higher. It's higher than it used to be. I don't know the exact data point on that. I think, anecdotally, uh, when we spoke, I said it was probably, earlier in my career, it was probably three to five percent of the calls dealt with that. And now, it's probably upward of twenty. It is, we deal with a great deal of mental health calls. It may be higher than twenty, but I, I truly don't know the actual date on that. I would hate to miss it.
Any other comments or questions of what we've gone through with this, to this point? We're, we're through the positions. I guess the next thing is, our favorite time of the year is...
Can I ask something about tourism really quick?
Of tourism, yeah, we didn't get into that too soon.
Yeah.
Let's talk about tourism.
Can we, um, if we were to take those funds from tourism, can we use up those funds in the town in a way to promote tourism within the town? Or how can that money be put into the budget to facilitate and to help us with tourism within the town?
Right now, you are basically under the agreement you would have to provide a one-year notification to withdraw. So, right now, I think you're pretty much obligated to, to include them in the budget. Um, unless, like I say, you're planning the withdrawing, maybe the, the next fiscal year, you might, the beginning of this coming fiscal year, you put them on notice for the following fiscal year that you plan on withdrawing. But if you're, if you are a member and you're, like I say, participating, then you're obligated to fund it.
If I'm not mistaken, and I may be, we are under a twelve-month contract. No, we have to give, we have to give them twelve months written notice. So, we could tell them April one, we're getting out March thirty-first, right?
Of next year, March thirty-first, next year, yes.
So, we can get out at any point. It's, but we got to stay, we got to pay for a year.
Correct.
But we don't have to wait until our, until our July one fiscal year and then say we're leaving in July of next year. We can go two thousand four and leave in March two thousand five. Is that what you're looking at?
Correct, correct.
How do you make those payments, Alan? Do you make those quarterly, or do you make those every year? Or how do you make those payments?
Usually quarterly, um, some, and then at the end of each year, I have to do a true-up. So, we might estimate what it is for a quarter and send that amount. Um, and then at the end of the fiscal year, we true-up any differential. Once the audit is done, we're sure to true that up and pay it.
I tell you, that's a really good job of tourism. Hi?
Hello, what?
She does a great job of tourism. I'm just saying, uh, she definitely brings tourism to the area right now. But, um, but I'm just saying that if we were able to use the funds in another way, um...
Yeah, we can, we, there are at that point. So, um, I still have the opinion that we've gotten nothing. We didn't get for our money what we, as a council, voted to re-extend this contract. And I don't think we got any more than we did when we put them on notice. Um, and so, we'll see what happens at the next council meeting since the mayor brought it up. But I, I'm inclined to...
Can we put it on the budget, please? I mean, on the next town council?
Does it have to be on the agenda, tourism?
On the agenda.
It's up to council.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so I, I, so Ms. Hicks and I would like to see tourism back on the agenda for the next town council meeting. And we'll make a decision what we're going to do then.
Would, would you want the director to be here? How, how do you?
No.
He don't need to hear. He knows what, he knows what the outcome's going to be. I'll tell him ahead of time. He, he should have been expecting it all along.
Yeah.
Personally, that's my, that's how I, how I see it. I, I, I know Ms. Hockett reached out to him and asked for things and, you know, I still don't think we're getting the bang for our buck from that organization, so...
And yeah, I have a question on the staffing front of that, um, the projected increase there. You took, we, at one point, you mentioned the sports tourism assistant or somebody along those lines. Where did that go?
They did try to hire a sports tourism assistant. They thought they had somebody hired for the position and it fell through. Um, what they've actually done is, some of the ARPA grants that they've received, is they've hired a sports tourism consultant who's been meeting with Terry and Brad and, uh, I guess myself and, uh, Christina, a few other people who are kind of tourism involved here at the town. Uh, I think they met with Erin as well. To, I guess, they're basically supposed to be preparing a inventory and plan, I think is kind of the, the idea.
And Erin has a tourism background, correct?
Yes.
Yes, she does. They are, I'd say, maybe a week or two into interviews for the, uh, the consultant is.
I, I've, I know I cast a deciding vote to stay another year. I, I had hopes that we would get something out of it. Probably the worst vote I've ever made to do that. But, I think, there isn't, there isn't anything in... ...to come to bring a tour bus in here. But what we have to do is we're, we rely on our recreation department, our product center, and this new thing to bring that business in. And we'll, that's, that's kind of my, my feeling on it. I've, uh, inwardly and outwardly cursed myself a few times for that decision last year. But, uh, you know, you know, you make a mistake, yes. I own up to it and go back to it. I would not support it again.
Well, I'm going to say my two cents, where? Nope. I'm disappointed. I would hope I was saying more by now. And I'd have spent back today to literally we outside another year notice.
I hate to disagree, but I'm grateful. I've got, something needs to be done about this.
Since we're all talking about it real quick, and I'm, you, you, everybody knows, you know, uh, I was a, you know, a big believer in tourism. That's no secret. Um, I think extending the contract as we did last year was a probationary period in my mind. And I hate to agree with you guys on this matter, but I'm going to. Um, I still think it's the office versus the person, versus the personnel that makes a big difference. Um, but I'm not in disagreement with you in a way that I was a year ago.
Yeah, I, just to add on, regional tourism is, I think, in, in my opinion, a huge benefit to us and makes a strong impact with our dollars collectively, especially for the reasons that you've come into the area. We want them to come to the area, but then come here. But I am not seeing the value, uh, for the money that we're putting in. I totally agree.
Well, I can send a letter tomorrow. If you want me to.
Yeah. I am, man.
Of course. I, I don't, I think we should do it in the, in the council meeting by vote.
Yeah, agreed.
I, I would, I would love for us to do that, but I don't think so. I, I...
But I think we're doing the right thing here in discussion.
So, we, we got, one week, in one week, we'll, we'll bring this before council for a vote and make our decision then.
I'll, I'll ask, as a board member, if there is, was a change in leadership, would that change opinion of town council?
I think it, I think it depends on who it is and what they can do, um, in the probationary period to show us the value of their leadership.
So, so here's the thing is, we're going to, we're going to vote the, we, we voted to cancel them in July of last year, and then in September, we reinstated it. So, if we vote to cancel them and we still have to pay them through March and they start...
There's still time to, yeah.
Then, then we could always, we could always reverse that vote again. However, um, it, there's a, there's going to be a whole lot go on. Because right now, what I see is that Terry and Brad and their efforts are what's carrying the town of Christiansburg. Um, so, they, you know...
We have invested money into this, as per say, tourism. I mean, we have an event coordinator at the Red Center that is fabulous. She puts everything together, even works on all the events. I mean, you see her carrying signs and carrying poles and carrying chairs. I mean, she does everything. And Brian Effley himself and all the people at the Red Center work entirely, and they do it on Facebook. They do it on mine. They go on, uh, whoever does that in the town, you know? You see, many, it's probably the one that does a lot of those flyers for somebody.
I mean, we, we could beat this horse to death, but there, there's everything from that website to, you know, it's just, if you have to be an off, is there potential? Obviously, it happened once before, so it could always happen again. But there's going to have, you know, before I bend as easily as I did this last time and not fight my fears, it, it's going to be a lot.
It's going to be less than a fight.
Yeah. Yeah. I feel you.
I, I, uh, yeah.
Because I believe we need tourism. I, it's not that I believe we need tourism.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
That's a lot of money for what I don't think we're getting.
Yeah. Especially when we're having to make decisions about if any tax increases in the future or positions. I mean, we're looking at, at so many things in here that cost a lot of money.
But this funding comes from the hotel, hotel.
Yeah, that one, three times.
And if we do not, if we do not spend it on tourism, does that go away?
I, I guess, uh, no, you would still be receiving the tax. Although, I guess I should point out that when council went from a eight percent lodging tax to a nine percent lodging tax, um, they did get pushed back from the hoteliers, although sort of the promise was that it was going towards funding the tourism office.
Okay, I got you.
So, you know, but it is councils, once it's in general funds, it's council's discretion.
Yeah.
Whether you take that as a promise to the hoteliers to, to fund tourism with it or not, I think that's up to you.
I think the right thing is to fund tourism with it, but...
Oh, yeah.
And, and I think to a large degree you are. We have, you know, two directors that work very diligently at it. We have, um, special events coordinator that is working at it. We have our PR people that are posting stuff up on our website. So, in a lot of ways, we are already spending a good deal of our funds on tourism.
We have people from the hotels claiming over here and telling us how much they wanted this part or how they want things to happen here.
All right. So, we're going to put it on the agenda for next one.
All right.
Okay, very good. Okay.
Now our favorite topic.
Now our least, favorite, least favorite topic.
Thank you. We got through all this, the Main Street program?
Yeah, yeah.
And trust fund, okay.
Wait, I'm sorry, sorry. One question about the Main Street program. Did I see that was not, was it just members?
All right, I got it.
So...
Correct, we do not have that in the current budget.
We, but we need that. So, um, that's a pretty important thing to me. Are we not able to do that program without this position?
Yeah, they, they will not, they will not, uh, we, we will not be approved for the Main Street program if you do not have an executive director. And the, the values of being, uh, you know, it'll, it'll take about eighteen to twenty-four months to get approved into the Main Street program, but the application process has started. They've moved, DCI's moved forward with that. And, uh, the advantage to having this is that the, the amount of grant money we're, we're eligible to apply for multiplies exponentially because you have, because you're in the Main Street program.
So, can we get Amanda, since she's the economic person, to get this certificate, whatever it needs to be? Or can we change her name?
It's a separate, uh, it's a separate job.
Yeah. This person's worked with Amanda quite a bit.
Yeah, it's, but it's a separate person. You can't...
Okay, we're talking so much about funding, you know, emergency services. Yeah, we're going to another position. Getting another position.
One, one that'll take and add revenue to the town.
Well, but, but the same token, if you, if you look at it that way, especially a hundred and ten thousand dollars, whatever, if we cut tourism out, we're saving a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. So, we're paying for this position, but it's not being in the, in the tourism business anymore.
Tourism budget.
It's...
I'm selling you a tourism budget.
What is the difference between a Main Street program person than Amanda's job?
Main Street is just for downtown versus Amanda servicing all of Christiansburg.
What do we have downtown that are really, it's, it's too big besides governmental offices and some businesses and lawyers' offices? That will make the, and I, and this is, is speaking from a person that owns several businesses downtown.
So, the whole, the whole focus, if you, um, and hopefully at some point, we get Main Street people in the, to bridge the council as a whole so that, so that you get a bigger picture of what the program does. But, uh, it, it's basically an effort to try to build downtown back into a vibrant business community. And without, without the, that person's job would be to build, uh, the downtown and find the grant money to take and help support. So, we're, we're paying for side grants because money that they have available that could help the businesses downtown.
Does this person be writing grants? Or is it somebody else?
Applying for them.
I think you may be right in some of them.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we think all successful Main Streets, uh, Wickville, Stanton, Frederickburg, you know, just in the Commonwealth. The one thing you see among all of them is that they have this infrastructure set up.
Well, one of the differences between them and us is that they do care about their historical stuff. When, in, in general, over here, we, we don't have that many buildings that are historic.
Well, we do. I mean, you, you were talking about the county building. That wasn't our decision. We care about that stuff a lot, right?
We care, but nothing is being done. And I, I mean, how many older buildings do we really have downtown that are not churches, nonprofits?
Who do we have focusing on that?
And governmental offices.
Who focuses on that? Who, you know, we, we, I, I, I think that we as a town should be...
How many things do you have downtown that you should worry about bringing to town? Because you have literally forty streets of downtown. And I'm trying to figure out, how are we going to spend? How is this taxpaying money going to help us? To help just those, and like I said to you, I have a, I'm very invested in the downtown. If anybody's going to talk about investment, it's myself. I have several buildings downtown with businesses that I work in every day nowadays. And so, I just...
You don't want to see it try to, to improve the business?
I don't see this for...
You don't see it ever happening?
No, I don't.
And you don't think that it'll ever become a more vibrant downtown?
Not with what we have, no. Because what you have downtown is not like we're buying buildings. It's not like we're building buildings. There is nothing else to build down to. And so, if you don't have no more land to build down to it, what's downtown?
But how do you transition, how do you transition?
You have a whole house that is so big, you have, you know, you have all of these governmental offices. It's not businesses downtown. And so, who are the main owners downtown? You probably have, the downtown is probably owned by four. The majority of the buildings are owned by four people. And that's not even including some of the, you know what I mean? And so, I'm just saying, is it another position really worth the spending this money into that?
You know, there's, we ran into some of the same challenges when Tim and I first proposed a Maine position. And we all know that has paid for itself, you know, ten times over already in her short time here.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, that if she can take on this position, you know, and can we get that funding?
Did you away with her position and let her take this one?
I mean, I would just say yes, and that's my opinion. I mean, she's great and she can be great at this.
Yeah.
We have it from the county too, and have it from the county too. But I am just saying, this is another position. And I'm not saying that I'm, we are increasing the amount of employees that we have right now. And we're thinking about, how are we now going to have a tax increases? And that's just my opinion.
Well, I understand that.
I mean, how much, where do you really want to invest this money downtown that is really going to make a difference? A museum and five built-in businesses? I'm just saying, maybe from a museum standpoint, I can say, this has nothing to do with...
Oh, yeah, I know.
I'm just saying, if we're trying to bring businesses downtown, where do, where are you going to put them?
In the empty spaces that exist.
Where, where are they?
A lot.
Amanda just told us the other day on central business, all of the downtown is filled up.
Yes, she's actually going through the inventory.
She went through the whole inventory and she told us there is no vacancy.
Well, I mean, Charlie, Charlie's Chinese is empty.
Well, there is, but she says, people think that it's a lot, but there is barely anything empty downtown.
Well, we have no idea about Great Road. There is a huge space.
Well, but that one is for sale.
And we don't, that's my point.
And he doesn't have it for rent right now.
Yeah, there's just a lot of...
There is a lot of financial stuff that goes behind that building right now on the owner. So, that has nothing to do with the vacancy.
So, that's all, that's all stuff that doesn't pertain to, to what we're, we're talking about here. And, and we're, we're...
But I'm asking you, how can you tell me as a business owner that owns several buildings downtown to tell me that you're going to sell that to the rest of the taxpayers to pay for a position to bring down businesses downtown?
So, when we start...
If I will be a taxpayer, I'll be showing you right now.
Oh, yeah.
Which I am.
Good.
And that's not even me being a, a business owner downtown.
So, then you're in favor of us not doing the, the things like the Rockin' Main Street and all these, these events that we're doing?
But this is not that.
These events that we're doing, would you listen instead of running your mouth? We're doing events to try to bring people down so they see your business. And then when you have events where you bring people downtown to see your business and we develop stuff downtown, then all of a sudden, you change the picture of the way the downtown looks. And so, the Main Street program is geared around developing events, developing structure, uh, creating reasons for people to want to move into those businesses, into those locations. Right now, you've got lawyers and, and all these businesses, or the, the personal service businesses instead of a retail or a restaurant type business, because that's what we develop. And so, we're trying to shift the focus of our downtown to become more retailer oriented so that, so that people come to events downtown and, and look and go, "Oh, there's a florist down here. Oh, look, there's a restaurant down here." Oh, you know, you come to the Christmas parade and Subway had a line all the way out the building because Janine and I made the mistake of not eating before we came down for the Christmas parade and walked to Subway, and it would have been a thirty-minute wait to eat at Subway. When we, when we create events, when we create stuff that's focused around Main Street, then all of a sudden, people who are other types of business owners start to see the, the viability because there's something happening in downtown. So, by doing all these Rockin' Main Streets, by doing the, the different events on Main Street, it brings people downtown to realize there are businesses down here and let's turn it back into a vibrant Main Street instead of the dead Main Street.
I would really like to see the sixty-seven thousand dollars invested in events instead of having to pay a person. How mu- much money do we put down into events downtown for the last year?
It'd be, it'd be thousands, I would think.
Enough.
Yeah, I mean...
How much money do we spend on making those events happen?
Didn't we do six events?
Yes.
They average right around fifteen to twenty thousand dollars per event, between the bands and the salaries and personnel, um, costs and overtime.
So, eighty grand that were well spent. We were to spend half of the sixty thousand dollars putting events downtown that are going to make people happy and bring people downtown than having a salary for somebody that's going to try to find people to fill into buildings. And that's just my position.
I think there's other benefits that are not just about what is financially beneficial in the downtown that we probably can't discuss right now. But the sense of community and the sense of connection and the heart of a community living in downtown area. Like, there's other benefits for Christiansburg as a whole that this position growing downtown then supports as a benefit for our whole community. So, I don't think it's just, it's just about the events happening on the street, although that is a conduit for building a vibrant downtown. What do you mean? So...
You don't have that many apartments downtown.
Do you think about apartments?
You say to provide more housing for people down? What was the mention that you said something about?
To develop a sense of community for Christiansburg as a whole, as a town.
I don't think one position is going to do that. But I think we don't...
That is what the position does.
All right, very good. We live on to...
Well, what have we decided?
I, I, I personally am in favor of the position.
I am as well.
I'm not.
I would, I would just say, I, I am as well. I'm not, I don't know if I even need to make it a disclosure now, but clearly, I'd be one of at least three parties that would, you know, take some sort of benefit involved in having a Main Street program, and we all know that. So, I would put that disclosure out there as one of three, three or more parties that would have a, uh, interest.
Will they be able to provide you grants for the museum?
Not specifically with the museum. No, they'd be all about the downtown ecosystem. So, having that disclosure said, I, too, would fully support that inclusion.
You have, okay, that is not included in the budget for this year. Possibilities to include a budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. But we're still stuck at a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars with tourism right now. And I don't know...
And, and, and so, reality is, we need the position before we're, uh, we're granted approval. So, twenty-five, twenty-six is probably a realistic date to actually ha- have to hire.
Kind of push it another year.
Right.
I mean, because with the organizational details that we need to work out, they, they wouldn't be ready to hire as of July first anyway. So, if you wanted to look at a half year, that would be, yeah, a potential option.
Something we could have and look at with the budget amendment, uh, stay involved because we will, you know, well, obviously, with, in this fiscal year, funds out, we, we always have some type of unassigned fund balance at the end of the year.
That's, uh, in agreement. We'll push it.
Been teasing this so and this is loud, which nobody can see anyway.
Ah, no. So, we printed it out for you. How's that? Um, we also...
Face one down, pass it around.
Yeah, I've already got one.
I wish you... Water in the wall.
Um, the other thing I'm passing around is the narrative summary of what all those grant requests are. This is kind of a short synopsis, so, um, we will, um, put all of the folders out on the, the council drive that if you want to go through all of the line-by-lines of the applications, you're more than welcome to do so. So, we'll get... So, we'll get those out there and available for you. But the, the Word document here kinda gives you a summary of each one of the organizations, who they are, um, what they're requesting, how long they've been funded. Um, the other sheet is just kind of a summary of what's been requested. That includes the, um, the lower portion of that form includes what we call the economic development pieces. That's the New River Valley on aging, the airports, those things for which we are members of those organizations and therefore contribute. We don't make them go through the huge grant process that we make, um, the people that we give community support to, um, go through. So, they're kind of the two different categories there. Um, but you'll notice that there are a number of what look like blank lines. They were funded in FY twenty-four. They have not requested in twenty-five. Um, we have a couple new requests in twenty-five. Um, quite a few dropped off from twenty-four that have not requested, um, so.
That's part of that three.
That really hasn't, this will be, twenty-five will be year three. So, a part of the, the policy is that after, they can only request for three consecutive.
Consecutive.
Not consecutive.
Three out of five years.
Three out of five rolling years. So, that, we're only just now hitting this, the twenty-twenty-five request will be year three. This is year two under the new, uh, policy. So, next year, that three-year roll will hit. Um, so you really won't see any effect of it until year four because they could still request in year three and not be able to request in year four.
I don't, I still don't understand why the agency on aging is here. Um, that should be under governmental.
They, she included it in the summary because we used to have it there, but we do have it down at the bottom.
Okay. And then about the airport, talking about the Phoenix Tech Airport, I would really like to see an update regarding what they are doing, what revenue is bringing to the town and, and all of the stuff. I, I would like to see an update from that or whoever is running that department, from our department, if you can.
Yeah, I'll have to keep that going.
About fifty thousand dollars out of our budget.
Um, the only one, if there was anything kind of weird about their application, we did highlight it in yellow, um, on this document, there are a couple. Um, if they fell into the things within our criteria that we are not normally funding or are within the policy to fund, they've been highlighted in yellow. Other than that, um, all the criteria that we set aside about being, um, nine-ninety organizations and so on and so forth, they met the criteria unless there's something highlighted there in yellow. Um, that's, how do you wanna handle community support this year? Do you want to do it, um, on the voting sheet as we've done in the past?
Yeah.
Okay, I will create one of those and email it out to everybody and.
What's the other option? What's the other option?
We sit here and haggle it out?
Everyone. It usually takes a long time, that one.
Uh, yeah, it does.
And you will not be on that list, correct?
The only thing that'll be on the list is what's in that top section of that one. Um, I have one other thing I was gonna pass around to you just for your information, Randy. And I had this discussion earlier today and we thought you might, um, kinda wanna know. This is our debt schedule. It's always in the budget every year. It's always in the financial statement audit. Um, but right under where it kind of says what the loan is, it tells you what the maturity date is on the loan, um, so it kinda give you an idea of when some of these rolls are, um, loans are gonna roll off. Um, so, we just thought that might be a piece of information you'd like to have. Um, we have, oop, I was going that way. Um, we have a couple that'll roll off in the next couple of years. Um, but a lot of them go out. We have, the Powell Valley loan, um, will be done in twenty-nine. Um, we have a two million dollar land loan and a renovation loan for the PD that'll be up in twenty-five. Everything else is, um, now when there's one aquatics loan that'll be up in twenty-seven.
Can you repeat the last senior, is that the PD, police department?
Mm-hmm. The, those alone, we took out to do the renovations on the police department and to buy some of the, uh, land, uh, up on North Franklin, uh, for. No. Well, we moved the road.
North Franklin Street project?
No.
Oh, you mean a Patrick's Way?
The pass-through road that.
Patrick's Way, yeah. Right there on Patrick's Way, the connector route.
That's what I couldn't think of, connector route. Um, obviously, I'm getting tired. Um, that was the loan for the connector route and that land and for the renovations at the PD. So, that'll be up in twenty-five. Um, the one aquatics loan will be up in twenty-seven, a small one. Um, and the loan for the water meters will be up in twenty-nine.
Can I ask you something, though? The police department loan for renovations, that has nothing to do with the three hundred thousand we did for the.
No, no, this was back when we did the third floor and put the elevator in. I think they were, the police department, if I remember right, was somewhere around nine hundred thousand of that loan. Rest of it was pretty much water meter project.
To be honest, I think I kinda suggested that, of course, because I think this is probably the toughest budget Val and I have worked on. And, uh, we just kinda wanted to let you know that, uh, while it's, it's a very tight budget, as tight as it's ever been, maybe there's a little good news in that, uh, at least some things will be coming off in the next couple of years.
Yeah. But now's not, I mean, other than the DEQ loan that has a, a promised very low interest rate, now's really not the time to borrow money because the interest rates are pretty, pretty high.
And that's probably not even so. Sure, obviously, we're not taking on the full project. We're doing it still a part of the sewer project that needs to be done. But we were to do all the things that really needed to be done and remodel most of the staff facilities, probably what, fifty million?
Well, yeah, but you can't take that all on at once. We, you wouldn't be able to manage it all.
No, I know. But I'm just saying, like, predicting what that's gonna look like in the future. You foresee some of the expenditures because those are, I'm very concerned more so about the necessities. You know, like emergency services and things like that of the nature, that a lot of things that means additional projects that we may take on. Um, but as far as those go, do you foresee, what are some of the very big ones that you think in the next ten years are gonna be big? Things that are probably gonna be, we have to say.
Probably more infrastructure, replacement of water lines, replacement of lift stations, uh, more water sewer projects. Um, we have.
We're doing a water loss study right now, so we'll have a better list of where our leaky pipes are. And that'll, that'll inform capital improvements that we'll, that we'll have going forward.
There's a lot of old infrastructure that.
But I want to retire before they pass.
I'm not tired yet. I get to pass this along to.
Well, I don't know, we, we've talked about certainly not doing it this year. It's certainly not above the realm to look at the tax increase for next year, real estate taxes. I mean, the people, the services, they want everything that we provide to them and they, you know, for fourteen cents on a dollar, they, that's getting a whole lot for not very much money. And, you know, if, I think that we need to start gearing ourselves towards something for the future simply because infrastructure, it's, 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 you know, the need to provide fire and rescue and staff and personnel. So, if it happens in twenty-five, it's, it happens in twenty-five. But, but for right now, I think we'll, we'll proceed on as we said. There were no recommended, no recommended tax increases, rate increases, anything at this point.
At this point?
At this point.
But there is also things that come out, you know, like, I mean, we spend a lot of money on the air conditioning system and stuff, or the aquatic center, but, you know, the aquatic center, I mean, that's not talking against it, but, I mean, it's a really nice facility. But with the age, things start to age too. And that, who is to say in another, you know, five years, you need another million dollars to do some remodeling and, or more.
But we're setting some money aside every year for maintenance over there, is that correct? We have a reserve fund, and it's not enough to fund.
We, we have a large HVAC pro- project coming up in the next two years, the next year, really.
I mean, a lot more money too coming out when we think about those positions that we start funding. This are, this can all have a very big effect in what we do. And once we create a position, I mean, that's a long time thing too because once you create a position, it's very hard to stay away from that. It's like tourism.
Okay. As a, we have.
Are you comfortable with the cola and merit at two and three percent?
Two and two.
Two, yeah, three, three and two. Three with cola, two for the merit.
I think that was it. I'll get those.
Which are all your questions?
I'll get those budget surveys emailed out to everybody tomorrow. So, sooner you get them back to me, the better. I know Tim's gonna just go and send it back.
Yeah.
You're quite predictable.
So, we're good at this point. There's nothing else to come before, I will adjourn the meeting.